All right, thanks Brian and welcome everyone to this April 22 meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight, I believe, with a presentation although I'm not sure I see our presenter. Am I missing Senator Smitherman?
Oh, I don't see him. Yeah, he's definitely not here.
I don't see him, but I don't have my glasses on so I want to make sure.
Definitely not here.
Okay, so we'll skip that then and instead we will go ahead and call the meeting to order and tonight we're going to start with an invocation from Councilor Andrus and that's going to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight by Boy Scout troop from 83 from Dawson. So if everyone will please stand for the invocation and then we'll invite y'all to come up.
Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon Homewood. Thank you for our city employees, our first responders, our educators, and our neighbors, and thank you for our scout troop 83 from Dawson. Our city is vibrant and growing with children of all ages playing in the parks and the neighborhoods. Please continue to bless them. We pray for guidance tonight as we serve. We pray for knowledge, humility, compassion, faith, and open hearts. In it is your name we pray. Amen.
All right, Boy Scouts if y'all want to come on up. I want everyone else to face the flag. I'm going to turn it over to y'all.
Salute, pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all want to get a picture?
Yes.
Y'all want to get a picture?
Get a picture guys.
There's the mayor right there. He's in the center.
I'll take one for the city. I think he takes one, okay? Okay, don't go anywhere. All right, I'm going to do it in landscape for us. Okay, one, two, three. See if I can get a portrait in there. Instagram, there we go, Instagram. One, two, three. There we go.
All right. Thank y'all so much. All right. Thank y'all very much. All right, Mr. Seacrest, if you'll please call roll.
Yes, sir. Councilor Walden. Gier.
Here.
Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Nels.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
President White.
Here.
All right, so we have 10 present. Next will be the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of April 8, 2024. Those have been previously distributed. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Those are approved 10 to zero. Next we have board vacancies. First we'll start with the Ward 2 Board of Education. I'll turn it over to Ward 2.
Yes. We received an application from Stephanie Mays and she is a fantastic candidate and we are having to make a motion for her to join the Board of Education.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Mr. Wolverton. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? She's approved 10 to zero. Congratulations to Ms. Mays. Next we have a Ward 1 Beautification Board seat. Is that still open for?
It was supposed to close today. I do not know that we received any candidates.
We did not. Would you like to reopen it for two weeks or?
Two weeks is fine. I mean, I talked to two candidates so hopefully, hopefully we get somebody in two weeks.
Okay, so then we will reopen that till May 6 at 4:30. All right, then we have a Ward 2 BZA position that I think we got one applicant for.
Yes, we would like to appoint Mario Nieves to that position. That's my motion.
All right, motion for Mr. Wolverton.
Second.
Second for Mr. Alamon. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 10 to zero and congratulations to Mr. Mario. All right, then we have Ward 4 Park Board appointment. We've had a number of applicants for that and I believe those interviews are set for the 25th.
They are set for Thursday and in case anybody didn't realize this, we're doing one of the interviews for Joe Levens at 4:30 because he had some baseball games that he had to coach. So we're going to do his early and then the other three will be, I think, from 5:15 to 5:45.
All right, thank you very much. And then finally we have a Ward 4 Library Board seat and I believe we've got two applicants for that.
Right, so we're going to need to set interviews for that as well and I guess maybe we can set those for next week.
Sure.
Yeah.
No problem. All right. And then lastly, we have an at-large seat on the HEC. We will open that up unless anyone has an objection to May 20 at 4:30. All right, we do have a few additions to the agenda tonight. The first two will go to committee referral. First is 230424, request to set a public hearing and consideration for sign variances at 740 Shays Creek Parkway. It's brought to us by Morgan Stanley and David Silverstein Jr. as well as Wyatt Pugh. That'll go to special issues. The next item is also to committee referral is 240424, which is request for consideration of budget amendments for fiscal year 2324, which comes from vehicle maintenance and brought to us by Blake Graves, our fleet maintenance director. That one will go to finance and then we've got two additions to other new business. The first is 250424, request for consideration to approve city match funds for travel costs for members of the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission to attend National Preservation Conference, brought to us by Councilor Smith. And then lastly, 260424, request for consideration of mayor's recommendation of a new fire chief. Mr. Wolverton?
We don't this time because we need to discuss something about that with the city engineer so, but thank you. All right, so with that I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended council agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 10 to zero. All right, so we're going to take one item out of order. It's going to be the last item we just added, 260424, request for consideration of mayor's recommendation of a new fire chief. I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. It's been a long, hard battle, I will say. We've had several different interviews for the vacant fire chief's position. Thankful for our fire department, a lot of them which are here, for continuing to do their jobs to the best of their abilities. I know we had an issue today as well with an apartment fire, so thank you to them for taking care of that. But after several first round interviews and then having a second round interview as well, we had some excellent candidates. I'm so proud that they wanted to come to Homewood and look at what we do here at the city and we were just so excited that we had so many applicants for this position. But after, after much thought and JJ, of course, thank you so much for being in those interviews with me, we have come to the recommendation for Brandon Broadhead. And so we are recommending that tonight and hopefully we'll get you guys to vote.
All right, so we have a recommendation from the mayor, but it would be nice to have a motion. Any second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Harden and a second for Ms. Andrus. Any questions or comments from anybody? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to zero.
All right, it's unanimous. You can get up here now.
Come on.
Two seconds. I do want to share something. If you ever give me the opportunity to speak, I promise you I'm going to take it. Because somebody once told me, if you ever get the chance to speak about your department and you don't do it, you have failed them. So first, I'm incredibly humbled and honored. One, to make the second round of fire chief interviews here in the city, knowing the other candidates were there, was humbling. I guess really the best word for it. But in the coming weeks, as I add a stripe to this jacket symbolizing the fire chief's position, I want you to understand that I don't take that lightly. I know what that responsibility, what that extra stripe means. I understand what the fire chief's job is in the city and what we are here to do. I want to read just a very quick excerpt from a letter of recommendation I got that I am extremely proud of and I might have shared it with a few of you, hopefully, but it was from one of our patients here recently and she wrote, it was the daughter, "My mom had a horrific fall down her stairs and suffered a brain bleed. She was unconscious, did not initially know what had happened. Situation was dire and I cannot stress how wonderful the calm care and swift actions of the Homewood firefighters who arrived to help us were. We put her in the ambulance, truly not knowing if she would live. I later found out that one of our very own firemen insisted on riding with her to advocate for her upon arrival at UAB. What a precious gift to know she was not alone." Skip a paragraph and then, "Above all this, in my mind, however, it is that Mr. Broadhead exemplifies what it means to go the extra mile and hold his team of heroes to the highest standard of excellence. He has also shown to me that he cares deeply for the people of our city and that this is precisely what our firefighters are called to do, to selflessly care for the needs of others in the moment our greatest fears and weaknesses." I read that because it talks about me, but what it doesn't say in there is that I didn't prompt that. Our firefighters, our first responders saw the need, they took care of it, just like they're doing right now on an apartment fire over on 29th Court. And that is the type of firefighters here we have here at Homewood. That is going to make my job extremely easy. And you guys giving us the tools we need to recruit the right people and the culture that we need to make sure that they stay here at Homewood is why we are what we are today. So I'm very appreciative of this opportunity and I want to thank you for this incredible opportunity and let's continue to work together to make Homewood a safer and stronger community for all. Thank you. I failed to mention my family because most of y'all know them, but my wife, Amber, she's a teacher at Edgewood, 4th grade. Gillian is the youngest here. She'll be kindergarten at Edgewood next year. Mary Catherine is 2nd grade at Edgewood and Ally Grace is Homewood High School sophomore.
Thank you, chief.
You got a smile on your face.
Absolutely. All right, so with that we will turn back to the regular order. We don't have any items on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go to the old business agenda. The first item is 110224, bid opening set for tonight for 4:45 PM with a deadline for submission at 4:30 for fire facilities maintenance bid, brought to us by, I'm going to say Chief Broadhead now, of the fire department. And we'll have a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, we opened the bids this afternoon. We had seven bids, so it's going to take a little while for the chief to go over that, but we appreciate all the people that submitted a bid, so he'll come back to full counsel with a recommendation at the next meeting.
Great, then we will carry that item over without rejection. Next item, 010424, request for permission to staff planning technician position, brought to us by Kale Smith and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met on April 15 and after hearing from Kale Smith, we voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, I just realized I didn't announce the resolution number for the chief. That would be, that one was 2444, so this one will be 2445. We have a motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's 10 to zero and as I said, a resolution 2445. Next item, 020424, request for consideration of budget amendments for fiscal year 2324. This is the Microsoft line item, brought to us by Brandon Sims, our IT director, and JJ Bischoff, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, after hearing from Mr. Sims, that'd be Brandon Sims, we voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have another motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is 10 to zero and as I said, a resolution 2445. Next item, 020424, request for consideration of budget amendments for fiscal year 2324. This is the Microsoft line item, brought to us by Brandon Sims, our IT director, and JJ Bischoff, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, after hearing from Mr. Sims, that'd be Brandon Sims, we voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have another motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that is 10 to zero and will be resolution 2446. Next item, 030424, request to surplus 1999 Ford F-450, the last four of the then are 6075, a 2009 Ford F-150 with the last four of the then 9346, and a 2013 Ram 1500, the last four of the then 5604, as well as various equipment. It's brought to us by Berkeley Squires and Jamie Hope and we'll have another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item, as ordinance.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. Hereby establish and declare that the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public and municipal purpose and therefore declared surplus property, namely, a Toro Multi Pro 1200 spray, a Toro sprayer model 07367, a Jacobson lawnmower, a Jacobson Tri-King lawnmower, a Toro Real Master lawnmower, and the three vehicles which Mr. White described, a 1999 Ford F-450 Super Duty truck, a 2009 Ford F-150 truck, a 2013 Ram 1500 truck. Section 2, the mayor and the C. Clerk authorized and directed the disposal of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? And if not, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Ms. Gier, and roll call vote please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President White?
Yes, all right, so that's 10 to zero and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Gier, and another roll call vote please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President White?
Yes, so that is also 10 to zero and that will be ordinance 2896. All right, next item, 120424, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Car Riggs and Ingram for accounting work. This item was brought by myself and we'll have another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that is approved 10 to zero and will be resolution 2447. Next item, 040424, public hearing set for tonight for consideration for condemnation of the apartment building at 10, 12, 14, 16, and 18, Aspen Cove at the park at Buckingham, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Public Safety. Does anyone know who's reading out Public Safety? Is Andy in there? Ms. Gier, can you pass down that sheet right there with the highlighting on it?
After hearing from Wyatt Pugh, the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Councilor Nels and second by Councilor Jones.
All right, so with that I will go ahead and open this public hearing. I see Mr. Pugh up there. Mr. Pugh, if you'll give us an overview at this point.
Very briefly, it's an apartment building that burned several years back. It's been sitting in a sort of increasingly dilapidated state. There, here are some pictures shown of the current state of it. There is a fence that's sort of haphazardly placed and not well-maintained, protecting the public from access to this unsafe structure. So at this point, the abatement board voted to send it for condemnation.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak to this item? If not, I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
Wyatt, have you had any communication with the management company?
Not since last week's committee meeting, but I have leading up to this and I even made them aware that they are sort of making plans to demolish it according to them, but I told them we were going to need to go ahead and move forward with some action.
We can't wait on them to make that decision.
That's right. And if they do come up.
Right, they've had plenty of time to do it.
And if they do come up and say, "We're ready now," that's great, we can still work with it.
I had, I met with the owner, I guess, last week, not knowing this was going on, after, after our meeting on Monday, and he talked like he was going to get a fence up and move forward. I think one of the problems is he's got a Georgia-based environmental company that's got to get state-registered. Does that make, isn't that what it is?
I think that's what they told me also.
Yeah, so they can't tear it down until the environmental report's done, but I asked him if they'd just get a fence around it and secure it. That's all we really want to do and I asked him to contact you and clearly that hadn't happened.
No one's contacted me.
Here's the thing, they've got, what, 60 days from, if we decide to condemn it tonight? Don't they have 60 days or is it 30?
They have 30 days to appeal it with the county.
30 days, yeah. So they'll have 30 days, John, and then...
All right, anyone?
Just a quick question, I think this is, consider this as a formality, but just, we've got a map and then we have some pictures. I can't, just the entire site though. None of the building that's being up for demolition, is there anyone currently living in any part of the building even?
No.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right. Anybody have a motion? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the condemnation.
Second.
All right, motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Gier. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is 10 to zero and will be resolution 2447. All right, and before we move on to our next item, I believe I see Senator Smitherman who wanted to join us tonight, so Senator Smitherman, feel free to come on up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, it's good to be somewhere other than Montgomery at the moment. You know, we're down to the last seven days and it's, I use this illustration of, you all remember the Ness is Quick, you know, when you put it in the milk and you stir it and you know when you get down about this far to the bottom, it gets a little thick, but we in the thick part right now. So hopefully I take the spoon and I kind of thin it out a little bit the next few days. But it's a pleasure being here and thank you all for having me for this moment. I just want to come and make a, you know, presentation to the council and our Jefferson County Fund that we have, I want to present to the council a check for $10,000 and it's to be used just for your general operation. You know, that's what, I just labeled it that I figured you all would know better how it probably needs to be used as it relates to this city. So I just wanted to present this to you and if there's anything else I can do to help you, let me know and if I can do it, I'll do my best to do it.
Well, thank you, Senator. We very much appreciate it.
Very grateful.
Do we want to picture maybe with the mayor getting the check?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Could you do that about once a month for us?
Maybe not once a month, but maybe once a quarter.
We'll take it, we'll take it.
You are the welcome, you're more than welcome. And remember what I said, just let me know, I'd be glad to do it.
We will, thank you, Senator. We appreciate it.
Excuse my timing, but in one life, y'all know me, related to late.
We were just talking about how sharp that tracksuit is.
In another life, you know I practice law. There's such thing as lawyers, there's such thing as lawyers' lawyers. I'm not doing anything else, you know, I go to court basketball around, so you see a product of me leaving school looking like this.
Absolutely, thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, 050424, request for permission to add 14 parking spaces in the right-of-way at 65 Old Montgomery Highway for Covenant Presbyterian Church. This is brought to us by Kale Smith and we'll start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, after hearing from Kale Smith and Daniel Taylor, the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval pending the indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Councilor Harden and second by Councilor Gier.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question.
I actually do have a question.
Okay, Mr. Sims?
So we talked about this and looked, you know, I know they submitted the right-of-way improvement, but currently their plan is to do straight-in parking and not angle parking, correct? And I, after just looking at that site some more and thinking about the way that that's used for running along the side of that road, I just want to make sure that we don't have a safety concern as it relates to the way that road's used. And I mean, after looking at it, I prefer that there be some type of angle parking versus straight-in parking, but if somebody on the traffic engineering side can say that there's no difference safety from a safety standpoint, then I'm fine going straight in, but I have a concern about the way it's currently structured as proposed.
I think if I'm remembering correctly, Kale, didn't they say the reason they had opted not for angles is because in order to do either angle, people would end up having to back out, go down the road, and do U-turns to get back going the right direction?
Well, and I did look at it from that perspective and they have a roundabout right there where people could go in and turn around and come right back out at the angle. So that's, I just wanted to talk about it because now's the time to talk about it.
Well, I share that concern. I was about to make the exact same comment, so I know that road is used by pedestrians and runners, so, a lot. And it's not limited to Sundays and it's not limited to Wednesday nights. I mean, it's 9 to 1 during Monday through Friday as well from daycare.
So if, if there's enough concern about it, I mean, then we'll send it back to committee and have a discuss, bring them back for the committee to discuss it. So why don't we do that? We'll go ahead and send this item back to Public Works Committee.
Daniel Taylor is not here, but I think it's Marty, is he? And maybe he can speak to concerns.
Yeah.
Because I can't, I can't.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something y'all are willing to consider or not.
Yeah, Marty Crawford, I'm on staff at Covenant. Basically, it seemed like the angled parking versus the straight-in parking, to us, I don't see any big safety value in one or the other. Maybe the folks who study parking all the time do, but to us, you know, the backing in and out seemed like kind of a wash, but it would help us, you know, we're blessed to need more parking, so that, at the end of the day, that's what we're looking for.
Well, and so I guess if, if you want to change your proposal to angle parking, first of all, Kale, I don't think we have a, we don't have a drawing for this yet anyway.
That's right.
So, so if you want to put, if you want to offer, proffer that tonight, that you'll change it to angle parking, we can continue with the item. If not, and we need to have a further discussion, I'm happy to send it back to committee next week, but I would prefer the discussion going in committee rather than out here.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's really just kind of a yes-no thing tonight.
Yeah, I'm fine to go to, fine to go back to the committee, but I guess the other, which was mentioned, the other point is our high usage times really don't conflict with the school. Obviously, Sunday morning doesn't conflict. We do have a day school. Their, you know, high usage times are right around drop-off, which is 9:00 AM, right around pickup, which is 1:00 PM, and then, you know, obviously there are other times that occasionally
But I guess the other, and which was mentioned, the other point is our high-usage times really don't conflict with the school. Obviously, Sunday morning doesn't conflict. We do have a day school. Their, you know, high-usage times are right around drop-off, which is nine AM, right around pickup, which is one PM. And then, you know, obviously there are other times that occasionally it would be used, but those are the prime times, and it...
Okay. Why don't we do this? I, I think this probably warrants some more discussion. So let's send it back to Public Works to have that discussion, and we'll meet again next Monday, and, and we can have a, a further discussion about it then, and then bring it back to full council.
So we need to meet with Public Works?
You'll need to meet with the Public Works Committee that will be held next Monday night.
Correct.
Would it be helpful for them to get an engineer to draw something up? Somebody that can help, help us visualize a little better?
I will say this was my struggle on committee as well, because, and that's what they were trying to avoid doing, was incurring that cost without having approval. And so my apologies, because I was part of it coming out to council at this point, but after just looking at the site further, I just have safety concerns and wanna make sure it's being done right.
Sure, and this is always sort of the chicken or the egg situation that people have to go through. So that, that's really their choice as to whether they wanna do it. But what I would suggest is, if you wanna talk to Mr. Smith about, about any potential safety issues, because I'm sure we'll ask you next Monday as well, and then we'll have a further discussion in committee.
And is it okay if I just clarify, he mentioned the high school traffic? That's not even, I mean, there's more than just the high school traffic. There's pedestrian traffic there as well. So that's, that's my concern, is the pedestrian traffic, not just the high school traffic.
All right, so we will send that item back to Public Works. Next item, oh-six, oh-four, twenty-four. Request to permit a tent in the right-of-way adjacent to twenty-seven oh-one Eighteenth Street South on Cinco de Mayo. Brought to us by Josh Gentry of Little Donkey and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Gentry, who is the managing partner for Little Donkey, wants to put a tent in the four parking spaces directly in front of the restaurant during the day on Cinco de Mayo, which happens to be a Sunday. And so they're going to put the tent up at ten AM on Sunday morning, and it will remain until the next morning, when the tent company will come back and deconstruct it and take it down. And like he said, most of the time, those, those spaces are indeed used for their restaurant, especially on Sunday, 'cause some of the other restaurants around the area are not open, and other, the other businesses aren't either. So, and they'll get it out of there. They're gonna try to get it out of there as early as they can on Monday morning, so as not to interfere with a lunch rush on Monday.
All right, so we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is ten to zero, and will be Resolution twenty-four forty-nine. Next item, oh-seven, oh-four, twenty-four. Request to set a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration of a sign variance at thirty-one twenty-five Independence Drive, Suite three hundred B. This is brought to us by EVI.
No, it's not. It's EW.
I was trying to say, that's not, that's supposed to be EW, right?
Yeah, it should be EW.
Yeah. And Gina Childers and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Um, yes, we heard from their representative from the sign company, and then I've been communicating with John Delt from, who is the managing partner for EW Motion Therapy, and he has submitted a letter from their landlord saying, stating that they'll be the only ones who will have a wall sign. The committee voted five to zero to set a public hearing for May sixth at six PM and refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending that public hearing. The motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, so we will set that public hearing for May sixth, twenty-twenty-four, at six PM.
This was to EW?
Yeah, yes. Just EW.
Just EW.
Yeah, escrit white.
All right, next item, oh-eight, oh-four, twenty-four. Request to set a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration of a sign variance at four oh-one West Valley Avenue. Brought to us by Birmingham Wholesale, James Dean Visual Art, and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Um, yes, we heard from Mr. Dean, and this is the former, it was a call center building over near, like, the Big Lots, or whatever it's called. And so they are proposing a, the addition of a sign, and it is slightly larger than what is allowed by ordinance. So we voted, the committee voted to set five to zero to vote a, set a public hearing for May sixth at six PM and refer the item out to the full council without a recommendation pending that public hearing. The motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, so we will also set that public hearing for May sixth, twenty-twenty-four, at six PM. All right, oh-nine, oh-four, twenty-four. Request to set a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration of a sign variance at nineteen forty-four Twenty-Eighth Avenue South. Brought to us by Southern Immediate Care and Karen Hollis and Wyatt Pugh. And once again, Ms. Smith?
Yes. We heard from Mr. Morgan. The committee voted five to zero to set a public hearing again for May the sixth and to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending that public hearing. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, so we will set that item also for May sixth, twenty-twenty-four, at six PM. All right, next item, oh-four, oh-three, twenty-four. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of an amendment to the final development plan for Sanford University, eight hundred Lake Shore Drive. Site address is eight forty-nine Montague Drive. To permit the proposed construction of a new three-story addition to the existing north parking deck that would expand the current structure and add an additional five hundred fifty parking spaces as a means to accommodate the university's on-campus parking needs. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a five to zero favorable recommendation. And we'll, I believe PND's already reported this out once, but why don't you go ahead and do it again, since it's been so long?
All right. After hearing from Caleb Martin, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. And the motion was made by Counselor Nick Sims and seconded by Counselor Jaleet Nelms.
All right, and so with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If y'all wanna come on up.
I'm just gonna introduce Julie and, and Caleb. I thought Julie was getting up, but y'all know Caleb Martin from Cadre.
Hello. How are y'all?
If you will, just sign in on the sheet there.
Uh, so yes, my name is Caleb Martin, and I'm with Cadre Engineering, presenting the final, I guess, the amended final development plan for the north parking deck addition for Sanford University. This parking deck project is an addition to the existing parking deck and was previously approved. I guess with the, I guess the modification being that we are rotating the structure slightly to retain the arts loft. This parking deck is located on the northwest side of kind of the quad inner circle of campus with the Montague, I guess, Montague Drive there. Parking deck will be approximately five hundred fifty additional spaces and will, by and large, retain the same, I guess, facade look of the existing deck. I guess the, the structure will be, I guess, shorter than, I guess, lower than the, the present parking deck there. And I guess we are also, I guess, was brought to light, I guess, concerns concerning the lighting. With the, I guess, the existing structures being, I guess, throwing light in all directions, we intend on using, I guess, directional lights to send light directly down onto the deck and shielding its view from the surrounding properties. We also intend on updating the existing deck to those same type of light fixtures.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I wanted to confirm that the lighting you mentioned, that is a proffer that, that is included in this. And I just wanted to confirm, you said that, I know you guys talked about a timer, the, the lighting, that it would go off. It wouldn't be on twenty-four hours or overnight, twelve hours overnight?
Correct. We intend on using a timer or motion sensing so that when people are moving around deck, the lights are on, people can see, good security. Once, you know, I guess motion has stopped, people are not on the deck, lights dim, and lowers that concern.
And I will say, in our meeting with Sanford directly before the meeting, Mr. Polczek said that I think it's gonna dim to a thirty percent level when not in use, and then it'll be on every night. But like overnight, it's gonna dim, yeah, starting at eleven, it's gonna dim down to thirty percent.
All right. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, then, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to amend the final development plan for the Sanford University Institutional Zoning District I-three for the properties described in section one below and exhibit A attached here, too. Whereas the Planning Commission of the city has favorably recommended the amendment of the final development plan as required by the institutional district for the property described herein, now therefore be ordained by the city council as follow. The final development plan follows the following described property described in exhibit A located in City of Homewood, and more particularly described as eight hundred Lake Shore Drive, Sanford University, with parcel ID numbers twenty-nine oh thirteen four ten oh three and twenty-eight oh oh eighteen three oh one oh nine. Be and the same as hereby amended pursuant to the final development plan attached as exhibit B. Section two, that from and after the enactment of this ordinance by the city council and approval by the mayor is otherwise becoming law, that the final development plan attached as exhibit B shall be, shall control the uses and restrictions applicable to the property described in section one and exhibit A. Previously zoned to the institutional I-three zoning district, subject to the following proffers made by the owner. When will one, the owner shall provide directional lighting on the upper levels of both existing and proposed additions to the north parking deck. And number two, submission of a photometric lighting plan to address ongoing distribution of lights at the campus property line to be approved by the building inspection department prior to the issuance of any permits for the construction of the improvements. Section three, that April twenty-second at six o'clock PM is the time and place for the public hearing. Section three, the city clerk has provided notice as required by law of this public hearing. Section four, if any part of provision of the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, all the parts not affected thereof shall remain in full force in effect. Section five, ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the city council or mayor of the city as otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you. And now entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Gere, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Segrist.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waldy? Gere?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Present why?
Yes, so that is ten to zero, and I'm now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Segrist.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes, sir.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Present why?
Yes, so that is ten to zero, and is approved, and ordinance, it'll be ordinance number twenty-eight ninety-seven. All right, next item, ten oh-four twenty-four. Public hearing has been reset for May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at six PM for consideration of a final development plan at two thirty-two Greensprings Highway for Bank of America to permit the construction of a four thousand two hundred thirty-five-square-foot single-story branch bank, as well as associated parking landscaping and other site improvements. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a six to zero to one favorable recommendation. And we will start with a report from PND.
After hearing from Connor Patton, the committee, the committee voted five to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing to be reset for May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at six. The motion was made by Counselor Andy Waltney and seconded by Counselor Nick Sims.
All right, so we will carry that item over for the public hearing on May twentieth. Which brings us to the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that agenda, amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gere, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved, ten to zero, which brings us to other new business. First item, twenty-one oh-four twenty-four. Request for consideration to move dates of May council meetings due to the Memorial Day holiday. This is my item. So we are going to move those dates to the first and third Mondays in May. So we will have council meetings on May sixth, bless you, and May twentieth. And then we'll have committee meetings on the other, the Monday in between, and then next Monday, on the fifth Monday of April.
So we're gonna have committees on April twenty-ninth?
Correct.
Okay, and then council on the sixth and the twentieth?
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, any other questions or comments? Not, entertain a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Gere. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is ten to zero, and will be Resolution twenty-four fifty. All right, next item, twenty-two oh-four twenty-four. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of April nine, twenty twenty-four, through April twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Brought to us by J.J. Bischof. Mr. Jones?
Counselor Alamon. Yes, I have the opportunity to review the vouchers this afternoon. I have the lift of order, and I thank Kellie for all her work and being ready for us. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Alamon.
So.
Second from Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is ten to zero, and will be Resolution twenty-four fifty-one. All right, last item is twenty-five oh-four twenty-four. Request for consideration to approve city-matched funds for travel costs for members of the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission to attend National Preservation Conference. Brought to us by Counselor Smith. There's a time consideration here, which is why we're dealing with it on other new business, but I'll let Ms. Smith explain.
Yes, this is actually something that the Historic Preservation Commission did last year as well. They get a grant from the Alabama Historical Commission to attend a conference that relates to historic preservation. As a certified local government, our board members are required to attend a certain amount of continuing education or conference hours to learn about historic preservation. So they wanted to do this again this year. Last year, Mr. Griffith, who is the chair of the commission, is the only member who went. This year, both he and Inslyn Crow would like to go, and they budgeted this in their request to the mayor for this year, so they had budgeted eight hundred dollars for that. And that's like a match for the grant to send two people to that, it's called the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions Forum. I believe it's in Ohio, and the grant will cover the rest of that cost. So they, they needed to, this is an item that kind of got lost in the shuffle, and they needed to go ahead and get that done so that they can make their reservations and get that taken care of for the two commissioners who want to attend. And that's why it's on new business and not going to committee.
And just to be clear, this is an item that was already included in the budget. It's just we need to authorize them to actually spend the money that's already been budgeted.
Thank you to Mr. Bo, who found out the amount of their account, because I had been asking for a while and hadn't gotten that information, and he got it for me in about ten minutes. So they have plenty of money in their account to cover the match, so that's not an issue.
All right, so does anyone have a motion?
Move to approve?
Yeah. Motion by Ms. Andrus?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is ten to zero, and will be Resolution twenty-four fifty-two. Which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of announcements. I saw a lot of people at Central Park last week for the grand opening of the new Central Park Playground in the Sea of Children that washed in as soon as we opened the gates, so we were very excited about that. That new addition will be, will be well-used for the foreseeable future. Thank you to Counselor Gere and to Mr. George Glover for inviting me to the Steve Skipper art exhibit. For those of you who have not seen it down front, it's incredible. I, I tell you, the, the portrait of Bobby Bowden down there is something to admire. It's really incredible, his, his artwork, and for him to be from, from here in Homewood. It was, it was a pleasure meeting him. Certainly, we have, I wanna thank Hand and Paw, which is a great five oh-one C-three here in the Birmingham area for their mud strut that they had on Saturday morning out at the park. It was great seeing a, a bunch of runners out there with their dogs and trudging through Homewood on a little misty morning. And then lastly, of course, we have We Love Homewood Day coming up, not this weekend, but next, on May the fourth. And we're excited to have finally gotten confirmation. For our grand marshal for the parade is going to be Coach Bucky McMillan from Sanford University Men's Basketball Team. So we are very excited about that. And we just look forward to a wonderful day. Hopefully the weather holds up.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Gere?
Uh, yes, so just to reiterate that the Arts Council event went very well for Steve Skipper. He is a Homewood native and a very acclaimed sports and civil rights artist. So if you weren't able to see the art yet, I'd just like everybody to know it'll be up through May thirty. And I do wanna thank the mayor for attending, and J.J. also attended and helped me on several issues last minute, so thanks to both of y'all for being here. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everyone who was able to make it to the library block party this past Saturday. Fourteen hundred folks showed up, really supporting our library, so I think it's really great that we have such a fantastic institution in our community and that we continue to support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
I will set Public Works to hear the, the item from tonight. And then I wanted to say thank you to the Police and Fire Department. We had a, we had a situation yesterday, for anybody that didn't see or hear about it, where an eighteen-wheeler flipped over and blocked about three lanes of traffic on Oxmoor. We just happened to be about five seconds from being crunched by that. We had just exited, gone westbound under the interstate, and looked back as the tractor trailer was tipping over and crunching on the, on the asphalt. So we flipped around real quick, called nine-one-one, and then myself and another bystander were able to get the guy out. Thankfully, he seemingly was okay, just kind of bashed his arm up a little bit. But Police and Fire were there very quickly, and everything was handled promptly and, or, you know... and, you know, very organized. And yeah, I guess it's just, it's exactly what, what I would expect and have come to, to know. So thank you for everybody that was involved. Thankfully, nobody seemed to be seriously injured despite the circumstances. And then I wanted to say a welcome to the new addition of Mr. Alamon's family, Byron, who came in a few weeks ago. He joined Hall Kent, what, a week and a half ago? And he joined my soccer team, I think, the next day. And then he scored a goal in our first, in his first game this, last weekend. So it's been really cool to, to kind of have him come in and hit the ground running. And so we're excited to, to have him. And then also want to thank the, the two applicants, the Board of Ed applicant, Ms. Mays, and look forward to good things with her, fill in that vacancy, and then also with Mario, fill in the BZA spot. So that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. While we're doing a soccer recap, also say that Brandon Sims's son, Asaya, plays with my son, Jackson, on soccer. And Asaya had two goals on Saturday night. But echoing Dr. Alamon's comments about the Library Foundation Block Party, it was a lot of fun. And thanks to Counselor Nelms and her family for joining. We had a city manager info table and talked to a lot of folks, and it was really good. Looking forward to continuing to talk to more people about the consideration. I know there's plans to do that at the We Love Homewood Day vendor exhibit at Central Park. So that'll be great. Also, had a chance yesterday to drop by Pigly Wiggly, talk to some Homewood Environmental Commission reps who are working on, you know, just encouraging people to reduce the use of single-use plastics. So they're really doing great things. And I thought it was important to give them a shout out with today being Earth Day. So happy Earth Day to everybody. And also, every time it's Earth Day also means it's my mom's birthday. So happy birthday to my mom.
It was your mom's birthday first. Mr. Jones?
Finance that followed by public safety. And I don't have anything else. Thanks.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah. So we are going to do the Park Board, Ward for Park Board interviews on Thursday. Joe Levin's at 4:30. And then the other three will be at 5:15, 5:30, and 5:45 for anyone who can be here for those. I am thankful for the hard work of the Historic Preservation Commission. Those, those folks work really hard. And I think they, they're, they kind of go, they fly under the radar a lot, but they do a lot of good work. And super excited about the new playground. Were there for the opening, and it was amazing. Just the kids were like chomping at the bit, like they were almost trying to like sneak in before, before the mayor had the chance to actually cut the ribbon. And the next day, with school being out, it looked like there were 5,000 people on the playground. I don't know how anybody was actually doing anything because everybody was just crammed in there so tightly. But it's beautiful. It looks fantastic. I think it's just going to be something that people are going to enjoy for a really long time. So very proud of that and thankful for the Park Board for getting that done.
That is the amazing thing about the design. If you look from it outside, it appears that, oh my gosh, I don't want to go in there. It's so crowded. But when you go in there, everyone is engaged in doing something and dispersed. I mean, the design is magnificent.
And you're setting Special Issues, right?
Special Issues to follow Public Works.
Okay. Ms. Nelms?
The park was fun. Lots of fun. I had a, got a. Did I do the what? Right. We'll go when nobody's looking. So if you get a call late at night, it will be us. I got a call from my child that works at Applause asking me what the heck was going on at the park. I said, it's just the park. So that's it. I don't have much else.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
I do not need to set public, what's the name of my committee? PND, thank you. What's the name of my committee? But I did want to pass on feedback I got from my former boss from Birmingham Southern. He's got, they live out in Greystone. And so he's got three kids. He has a child with autism, and then he has a three-year-old and a six-year-old. So he has really, they, they have very high standards when it comes to parks. They travel around the area. They go to all the parks. He says, kudos to Homewood. This place is nice, packed, but nice. I mean, it is a major, in all caps, upgrade. So he, they, he was very impressed. He's hard to impress. They were very impressed. But I also want to point out, and that we probably have a ribbon cutting, cutting coming for the outdoor fitness court in West Homewood. So that is also, that has been installed. So go check that out. And then I also want to remind everybody, the Hollywood Garden Club's home tour is this Sunday. So go check that out. They've got tickets available.
You gotta buy tickets.
Yeah, you gotta buy tickets. But really beautiful homes, including, I think, the original home in Hollywood, Clyde Nelson's old home. So check it out. Yep. And that's it for me.
Mr. Harden?
I just want to reiterate that I'm grateful for Mike and Bo and his staff and all the work that's been done in our city in the last three weeks. Very grateful.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Wolverton, can you add one more?
Yeah, I forgot one thing. Real quick. My, my son just transferred from Cub Scouts to Boy Scouts with Troop 97. And they have the annual All You Can Eat Pancake Breakfast coming up. So if anybody is looking for a ticket, he was out running around in his, in his scout uniform, selling tickets when I came over to the meeting today. So if anybody's looking, just let me know. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I don't have anything tonight. So we'll go ahead and adjourn, and we'll see everyone in the next few weeks.